All right, then we move on to individually considered resolution. Resolution number one, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area city district board of education approve the closure of Smith Elementary School effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year. Be it further resolved that the Smith Elementary School attendance boundary be merged with the Jefferson Elementary School boundary as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess I'll go first here then. Just as a little side note, I was doing my due diligence on this, I was reading over the William Waters book here, and in 1894, the school board of the Oshkosh School District had facility studies done, and the facility studies strolled that the original Smith School was in the worst condition. So I kinda said, well, this is, everything is truly a circle. This is extremely difficult. I've had my hair go grayer, I believe, I've lost sleep, I've probably lost a friend over this, and nobody enjoys doing what we're doing. And I just want to reiterate again, because people complain about the speed we're doing this, that was by request of us, because we wanted it to be known as soon as legally possible to be known, so people would have time to plan. Believe me, it would've been a lot easier doing this if we did it in secret, but we didn't want to do that, we wanted to be upfront, transparent as possible. And when William Waters designed that school, it was designed in mind the last 75 years, and we got 50 more. So that is an amazing testament to our maintenance department where they can keep it operational 50 years beyond its lifespan. When we first heard of the roof problem, we asked if there was a Band-Aid that we could put on it to make it last another year, and then they came back and said, there's nothing we can do. And that kinda forced our hand again. This was supposed to be part of a larger facilities management discussion, but the roof kinda pushed Smith up in front. You know, I said, it's, this has not been enjoyable a couple of weeks, but we have to do what we think is best for the district, and it's something that each one of us has to think about and make up their own minds.
Is there anyone else who wanted to comment?
I did. I didn't comment at our meeting two weeks ago, and that was intentional, because for that meeting and then for the two weeks leading up to this, I wanted to listen, and I really wanted to hear what everybody had to say. So the first thing I'd like to do is thank all of the people who reached out in any way that they did, whether it was email coming to meetings, calling me, you know, pulling me aside in public, I appreciate all of that. I wanted to make sure that tonight I felt like I had all of the information that I needed. What I heard mostly from the Smith community was that you're frustrated, you're disappointed, and there's a lot of concern about your kids. And I want you to know, I feel that too, and I feel really sad that we're here tonight. So I also wanted to share that I've been on this board, I ran in 2010 when they were shutting down schools, so I get it. And in 2011, when I got on the board, we started with a deferred maintenance budget that was just astronomical. And we started chipping away at that. So it's not that the board has been sitting around letting roofs go into decay and let boilers fail, we've been slowly starting to chip away at that, and the government, after Act 12, gave us a mechanism to do that. And we utilized that mechanism to the extent that we could. We have 22 buildings in our district, and we started to make a dent in that maintenance, that deferred maintenance budget. And then the mechanism was taken away, I think it was last year, and now it's back. And it feels to me like we're trying to bail in a boat that has a hole in it. And we just, I feel like we can't get ahead of it. So when I'm given a choice of our limited resources, because that's reality, and I have a dollar, and I can spend it anywhere, the way I want to think about it is, who does it impact? We've got 160 some kids at Smith, do I spend it there? We have, I just looked up schools, Franklin has 386, do I spend a dollar there? Do I go to Merrill? They have 720 or some kids, do I spend it there? We only have a pot of money, and it's a pot, and we have to be really intentional about the way that we use those dollars. So that's the way that I'm looking at it, and I just wanted to share that with those of you that came tonight and anybody that reached out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Well, I too would like to thank everyone, I'm sorry.
You can go ahead if you wish.
No, go ahead, you're a little bit slow on the draw there.
That's all right. I don't have much to add differently from the last meeting, because my opinion still kinda stands, and I think my opinion is really built in the premise of the age of the building, how much it costs to maintenance the building to bring it up to future educational capacities. And that's not, when I say it that way, it suggests that the educational capacity there is not sufficient now, and that's just not true. The staff that's there has done a phenomenal job. The families that bring their kids there expecting that the staff are gonna do a phenomenal job have met that, have had that expectation filled and fulfilled, and that's true in what we've seen at all the meetings that have taken place in the community over the last month. And so I don't want to discount what that school has done in our community, because it's done a great, great deal of educating kids' minds, providing avenues for our teachers and our staff to instill their skills in our community, and that's really important, and I don't want to diminish that in any way. I'm gonna make a statement in a little bit, and I'm gonna ask for some, some extension of time, because it's gonna take me a little while. But my decision's really based in kind of hitting on Mr. Evans' context of that the building was only really built to be an educational facility for so long. And we can continue to update things as technology tells us that we can do this, but there comes a point where we have to look at, is that still a solid investment to continue doing? And I made the comment, and I stand by this comment, the school district is not in the business to maintain 125-year-old buildings for educational purposes. And what I mean by that is that, let's just take that $400,000, $400,000 to replace that roof. That $400,000 to replace that roof is just to create a roof that makes it happen, but it doesn't do it in a historical context. And that building needs a historical context. And as we go through making our decision here, I can, I think I can comfortably say that no one on this board will vote to tear down the building, no one on this board will probably sell it off in a way that does not maintain it in a way of its historical significance in our community. Frankly, what you hear on the internet or on Facebook about Oshkosh throwing away its history is just not true. I believe that when the decision's made to move the Smith children to a new school, that they will be placed in a school that will provide them just as valuable education as what the Smith School has provided for the last 125 years. And when we create a plan for what the next steps of that building will be, will still, I believe, in hindsight, will still be in reverence of its historical significance in our community. So that's, that's how I, as a future, would make a decision based on that property, is that the person who buys it or the entity that buys it has to maintain the historical significance of it, because it's that important as a school and as a portion of the neighborhood, and not just a portion of the neighborhood, but a portion of our community. But I just have a challenge with investing money in buildings that were never meant to be educational facilities for this long of time, especially when we have buildings throughout our school, throughout our community, that have the capacity to take on the lives of these children and the educational future of these children. It's there, as hard as that may sound, it's there, and we have staff and community and teachers that are, that are happy and willing to take on that next task. So what I'm gonna ask for an extension of time, if I can be provided that, is I'd like to take a moment to read the names of the staff of Smith, because I believe in talking with families who were for or against this, us closing the school, the one thing that they said was, "Smith School has a great staff." I feel compelled to give them that reverence, so if I would be afforded some extra time, I'd like to go through-
Are you talking about 124 years of staff?
No.
Or current staff?
My computer just froze up, it just cleared up on me. Marcy, do you know the total number or not of staff?
Of current staff?
Yeah.
Probably 25 to 30.
As long as it ties with the resolution, we have to, you know, in Wisconsin open meeting law, we have to make sure that we stay on task.
Well, I believe this directly relates to that, because these staff are, our decision would create a path different than them teaching at Smith.
Okay.
So if you give me a second to get my password in here again, I feel under pressure here.
While Bob's talking, I just also wanted, there's not much I can say that hasn't already been said, and those who know me know that I get quite emotional, so I wasn't gonna say a whole lot. But I just wanted to say thank you to the people who reached out and whether they support or did not support it, and to know that we absolutely, and including administration, I've seen them go through this, it's been very, very difficult. But we do have to listen to and look at all aspects. When our administration comes forward with a recommendation like this, we can't ignore it, we have to realize, you know, what the future holds for us, and I agree with what Allison and what Bob had said about the school building itself. So thank you.
So I can take a break from reading this if there's other members that would like to stay, and then I can come back.
I just had one quick comment too. I'm not, I said a lot at the last meeting, but I'm reminded of the phrase that oftentimes doing the right thing is the hard thing, and this is the hard thing, and it is also the right thing. We were elected to this board to do what is best for students, and every decision that I make, I think about what is best for our students, and I honestly believe putting them in a school that is 105 years newer will give them greater access to technology and resources and full-time music teachers and art teachers. And after hearing from the Jefferson community, they are excited, they are excited to have more students in their building, and I think that's fantastic, because, you know, we heard Jennifer say last week that some of their events aren't very well attended, because there's not that many kids there. And so I think it's great that Jefferson community is embracing this decision. And again, thank you to everybody that reached out. I know this is emotional, and the past few weeks have been very difficult, and I acknowledge that this is hard on your children and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Peschall, I think you're up there.
Sure. So again, in talking with families, the theme was, is we really would like to find a way to respect or provide some type of level of respect or recognition to the staff of Smith School. So this morning, I emailed Mrs. Gunlock, and I asked for a staff list of that, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm using today. So I'm just gonna go in alphabetical order. Bailey Avers, school psychologist. Emily Bauer, media specialist. Abby Bertram, cross categorical teacher. Jamie Bliski, 4th grade. Bethany Colwin, secretary. Amanda Curtis, kindergarten. Katie Drexler, nurse. Jody Gunkel, social worker. Marcy Gunlock, principal. Nick Hillary, music teacher. Kelsey Howard, 1st grade. Tina Jeffrey, speech. Abby Cruck, 4th grade. Shannon Lett, cross categorical. Kathy Lloyd, ELL teacher. Food Service Dale and Erin, sorry, I don't have their last names. Amy Monagle, 5th grade. Becky Mueller, cross categorical. Kevin Miller, lighted schoolhouse and sensory room. Diane Hinz-Morowski, media assistant and office assistant. Brooke Newbauer, art. Wendy Payne-Jozwiak, counselor. Stacy Reese, 2nd grade. Terry Smith, 3rd grade. Bob Steinheuber, custodian. Kathleen Stefani, IST technology. Katie Tennessean, behavior interventionist. Constantina Tesolius, cross categorical, sorry. Sarah Volbrick, literacy resource. Jan Wagner, IST math. Sarah Walsh, cross categorical. Natalia Wilde, PST. Jenny Wolf, 1st grade. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other board member who wanted to speak?
I'll add some comments. I also spoke a lot last week, so I'll try to be brief. But we did still hear emails this week, and I took all those seriously, there were some questions asked that I wanted to get down to, the facts, I like facts, and some of the things, some of the themes that I saw were, you know, what if, what if we need more space for Southside students in the future, isn't it a better investment to fix Smith now than to have to add on later? So I looked up the 2015 Lakeside project, they added an entire track, seven classrooms to Lakeside Elementary, and the total cost for that was $2.5 million. So the fact for me on that was that no, the better investment would be to spend the money on something new. I don't think there's really evidence that that hypothetical situation will come about, but it was important for me, whether it was real or hypothetical, to just know the answer to that. And the other thing, I know a rebuttal to that would be that there's this thought that smaller schools are better for students. And I am an educator, I was, I've been at home for a while, but I've done a ton of educational research, and if we look at the numbers, if you have a school of 150 students, and you divide that by the six grades, each classroom would have 25 kids, right? But if we have a school with 400 students, and you divide that by the six grades, and you split it into three tracks, each class has 22 students. So it's not actually true that smaller schools result in smaller classrooms, and we've looked at the data of the classroom sizes, we've been sent all sorts of, what the data will look like, and combining the two schools doesn't make significantly bigger classrooms. And I shared last week that I have been through this as a teacher, I have, I cried, I walked the block and called my mom on the phone and sobbed, my students didn't react great, so I really know what you're going through, and I do know it's hard for the students. I went from a school that was open concept, was poorly maintained, and had a lower student population than the second school I went at, which was a modern, just like first year redone building, and had a full three tracks. And if it weren't for the fact that I saw how much better of a teacher I became in a three-track school with more teacher collaboration, and how much better of an outcome I saw from my students in a modern school that provided better resources for them, I don't know that I could make this decision, because I remember how hard it was to be in your shoes. But I saw, and this is especially, I just wanted the board members to know, I saw that I became a better teacher, and my students had a better outcome when they had a modern building and a three-track school. That was part of Dr. Kim Brown's slide that she presented last week, and I didn't at that time, you know, reiterate that I fully know that that is true, and so I just wanted to share that here.
Thank you, Mrs. Salagi. As Mrs. Carlin had noted, this is a difficult decision, and I don't think that any of us take this lightly, I think you hear that reflected in the voice tone and the body language and admissions of loss of sleep, which I have experienced, that's not something that's common to me, but it has been over this issue. As a board, we're charged with looking at the big picture, and we're charged with developing plans for the entire district, and I don't think any of us are really relishing sitting at this table tonight. We would have preferred that decision on any school could be part of a larger issue. But when we are presented with information that states that a roof may not last another year, and that it can't be Band-Aid, and we heard last time that there are wooden timbers that are rotting up there, for me, this is truly a safety issue, and I, I can't see putting the staff and the students at risk of a roof collapse in such a situation. I also agree with Mrs. Salagi and others who have spoken that there are more opportunities for students who are in larger schools. And I do value the small school, I was reflecting back on my own elementary experience, while I could name every teacher, I couldn't tell you how many tracks were in our elementary school, that goes back a lot of years, so please forgive me that I can't remember how many tracks there were. I believe there were at least two tracks. But I know that both of these schools have been schools of promise, I know they are AGR schools, so we're not losing anything in terms of that. I have great faith in the Smith teachers continuing to do the good work they do and have done over the past 124 years, and I have great faith in the Jefferson teachers that they will embrace these new students and staff members as their own. We really have to focus on what's best for students, and I really believe that our administrative team, starting with our superintendent, will put students first. And we are concerned about emotional health as well as academic health, and I, I truly believe that that will be addressed. As far as not having plans, I know, I know that's been mentioned a couple of times, administration really can't go forward with implementing plans until there is something to be implemented, and that won't happen until after tonight's vote. And I, I was trying to remember some of the other schools that have closed over time and what the timeframe has been. Someone had mentioned that Green Meadow was closed in the summer.
It was August.
With not-
We had weeks.
Much.
We had weeks.
Three weeks.
There you go, they have a better memory on that than I do. I do, however, remember Sunset School very well. We're on a Friday, in the morning, the superintendent asked an administrator to find a place for that school population to be on Monday and have the building operational, and it was in the winter. They didn't make it by Monday, they made it by Tuesday. And they didn't have devices, so they couldn't communicate with the parents, so there were lots of phone calls, staff were paid to come in over the weekend and move things, and custodial staff throughout the district rose to the occasion. So there doesn't seem to be a good timeframe, in that case, the issue was mold, and there were staff and students who were manifesting symptoms of problems with mold, and so they didn't have even a week, they had essentially four days to make that move. So the kids were there all day on Friday, staff came in in the afternoon on that Friday afternoon, and they were relocated to a church school, and they spent the rest of that school year there. So there is no ideal situation, I guess, when it comes to school closings, or at least the district hasn't, hasn't seen those, at least not in recent memories. But again, for me, safety is a paramount concern, providing more opportunities for each and every student, making sure that we have our mental health professionals available to help the children and the staff, staff do have EAP programs that they can avail themselves of, but we really have to focus on what's best for the students, and we cannot go another year with a roof that probably would not survive the kind of winter we just went through. So my focus is on students and the overall health and well-being of the students and the staff, and I am convinced that our administration will be working very hard all summer to make this as smooth a transition as possible. The fact that the students and the staff have the opportunity to go to the same school together should aid in that transition. I guess I've talked enough, and that's all I care to say tonight. Is there anyone else who wanted to weigh in one more time?
Excuse me, I'd like to say something.
I'm sorry, that's not permitted, only the board can speak at this time.
Why can't I speak?
Because that, we only do that during the public forum. We do not have audience participation during our business meetings, and that's what this is, so I'm sorry, but that's not, that's not permitted. I'm sorry, we just, that's not how we operate, and we can't make an exception. You're certainly welcome to talk to administration after the meeting or any board member, but we don't have a dialogue with the audience during a business part of the meeting. All right. I guess we called off?
Persa?
Yes.
We've got Guy Alston.
Aye.
Alston, I'm Peschall.
Alstetai Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I'm sure administration will be working closely with families, as they have to this point, with communications going home and invitations to meet in the coming weeks, so that we are ready to roll with the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Peschel, I felt, did an excellent job of thanking current Smith staff, and we, we truly are indebted for everything that the Smith staff have done over these last hundred-and-twenty-four years, as well as those who have shared input tonight and in the days and weeks leading up to this meeting, so for that, I say thank you. I guess I just jumped ahead to announcements. Are there any requests for additional, or future agenda items? Any other announcements? We thank you all for coming and for your input. It has, has helped us in our journey, and as we move forward with additional plans for facilities planning, which we really do need to address in this district and which our community has spoken to us very loudly on when it came to our current strategic plan and the one that, that led up to this one. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Please call the roll.
Alstet?
Aye.
Alstetai Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Solaji?
Aye.
Solaji, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Gerzow?
Aye.
Gerzow, aye. Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.